I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P M. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill two thousand and five sixty, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are printed on the agenda of the meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, they were to have emailed their comments to the city recorder prior to twelve noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either of those times, virtually or in person, you were to have emailed Tammy Bannock, the city recorder, prior to noon today with your name, topic of discussion, and city of residence. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are again limited to three meetings, minutes. Tammy, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel. Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several special items to open our meeting tonight. I would call on city administrator Betts to introduce the first of these.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tonight, Judge Lindgren is here to administer the oath of office for Sierra Cook, counselor position number four, beginning January one for the next four years.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sierra Cook, I, Sierra Cook, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the state of Oregon, and the Charter and municipal code of the city of Gladstone, and the Charter and municipal code of the city of Gladstone, and that I will, and that I will, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of city council, perform the duties of city council for the city of Gladstone, Oregon, for the city of Gladstone, Oregon, during my entire term, during my entire term.
Administrator Betts, just to clarify something you said. I believe that Sierra Cook was appointed to fill the vacant term of Vanessa Hartman, which is a term that expired in, was going to expire in two more years. She served one term as an appointed official and was elected. So I think, I think this coming year is the fourth year of that term.
That is correct. So it ends December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for that correction.
All right, and so in two thousand and twenty-four, we'll have our third consecutive election or appointment for that, for that position.
Yes.
All right. I wish it was a four-year term. Welcome, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
A couple of years ago, the city of Gladstone made some changes to its city charter, one of those requiring us to elect a council, to select a council president every year. It used to be only in odd-numbered years. So the people have spoken on this issue. They want to see an election each year, and tonight's the night we do that. Before we begin that process, first of all, I want to say thank you to Counselor Vanessa Huckabee, who has served as our selected council president for this past year. I, inspired perhaps by the school district's attendance campaign, Gladstone shows up. I managed to go through the year without missing a single meeting, and therefore, Counselor Huckabee never had the opportunity to actually chair a meeting on my behalf, which is one of the duties of the, of the council president. But I want to say that occasionally there are issues that come before the council where the city administrator feels it's very important that the presiding officer is well-informed with the matters before, coming before the committee. And she has made sure that each time in those circumstances, that both I and Council President Huckabee have been kept informed. So she has taken her responsibilities seriously this year and been willing to step in, just never had that chance. But I have been happy and confident with her working beside me on that. Now, at this point, I will say something I said last month when we were doing appointments to vacant positions on city boards and agencies. Sometimes there's value in keeping someone who is experienced in that role because of the experience they bring to it. Sometimes there's value in having new people take on those responsibilities and having a good rotation. I think that the decision in the city charter to have these elections every year may have indicated there's a preference among the electorate for having changes in this leadership. But that doesn't prevent us from nominating and reappointing Counselor Huckabee, nor does it prevent us from choosing someone new. So that's the situation we're in. I will open it up to nominations for members of the city council for the position of council president for the year two thousand and twenty-four.
I would like to nominate Counselor Roberts.
I second that.
All right, Counselor Luke Roberts has been nominated by Counselor Huckabee, and the nomination was seconded by Counselor Alexander. Are there other nominations? I saw a nod of the head from Counselor Roberts indicating he would be willing to accept that nomination.
I accept the nomination, thank you.
All right. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, I will ask the city recorder to poll the council, and we will see if Luke Roberts is elected as council president.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
I will not vote.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. There are five yes votes, one abstention, and one council member absent. Luke Roberts is elected council president. Congratulations, Luke. Steve Schmerber, I believe you have the next item on our agenda, an introduction of a new staff member.
Thank you, thank you. If you don't mind, do you want me to stand closer to the mic?
That's fine. You want to be where you're visible. That's from the camera, so.
If I can get Trevor, Trevor Benya to come on up. Oh yeah, there you are. Tonight, a special, pretty special night for us. We are here to introduce to you the council and the community, our new record specialist, Trevor, Trevor Benya. He was selected after a competitive process and started with the Gladstone Police Department on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, and has been in training ever since. A little bit about Trevor. He attended and graduated from Westland High School, attended Portland State University, where he received his undergraduate degree in criminal justice, also received his graduate degree there, and a master's of science with a focus in crime data analysis from Portland State University. Trevor is married, and he and Jordan are working on their, on their first year of marriage. No kids, but they do have a dog and a couple cats that keep them busy, so. Trevor enjoys outdoor activities and spending time with family and friends. Although Trevor did not come to us with records experience, he has shown to be a very quick learner and provides quality service for our community and staff. So we greatly appreciate his service so far and his learning, and he's fast at it. So please welcome Trevor to the GPD family here and the city of Gladstone. I feel like you gotta get a speech, right?
Oh, no.
Did I forget to tell you that?
I'm not prepared.
Anyhow, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Our last item before we get on to the regular agenda is a presentation on the Behavior Health Crisis Program. Administrator Betts, would you like to, or is it the chief again?
It is the chief again.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody. At the conclusion of our discussion, thank you, surrounding developing a partnership with Clackamas County Behavioral Health, there was discussion regarding listening to a presentation from Milwaukee P D regarding their succession of B H U unit. So tonight, I would like to introduce to you that unit who's taken the time to come out here and, and talk about their successes, some of their challenges, and the good it's provided to the Milwaukee community. And hopefully, at the end, we can tie all that into what we're trying to accomplish here in Gladstone. So at this point, I'd like to introduce you Chief, Chief Luke Straight, if you can come on up. And I'm, I'm sorry, Glenn, about your last name, but Suconic and Brandy Johnson, executive director of Love One Nonprofit. Glenn is the behavioral health specialist, and we're gonna pull up another chair.
I'll turn it over to you right on, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Milch, council, and members of the public. My name is Chief Luke Straight, and I'm with the Milwaukee Police Department. I've been with Milwaukee since nineteen ninety-five and worked my way through many of the positions in the organization before arriving at this position and have served as the chief of police for the past five years. Over the past four or five years, I've gotten the opportunity to work closely with Chief Schmerber, and I know he's been a real asset to the community and the profession on this side of town once he moved over here, so great move there. I'm gonna give a brief introduction to this program. We want you to just have a quick overview of our program and our experiences this past year. About two years ago, the city of Milwaukee started looking into and researching having behavioral health services internal instead of relying externally on the county for those services. We have nothing bad to say about the county, but our experiences were they were spread too thin. There were a lot of times when they were not available. If they were available, they were coming from somewhere else. And if they were available, they weren't necessarily connected to these problems the same way a city of Milwaukee employee would be. Because when they dealt with the issue, they would leave and go somewhere else to deal with another problem somewhere else, most likely outside of the city. We determined that we wanted to start providing those services internally with the city of Milwaukee employee and opened that recruitment, and through that recruitment, we ultimately hired Glenn Suconic seated at my right here. I had known Glenn for several years at that point, and I'm gonna talk briefly, and then both Glenn and Brandy will talk more. Glenn was previously affiliated with the Lead or Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program that was run through Central City Concern and did a lot of work throughout Clackamas County, working both with the police agencies in the county, as well as the District Attorney's Office and other social services in the area. That is a pre-arrest diversion program that's designed to kind of minimize the use of the criminal justice system and utilize other options to solve low-level behavioral or criminal issues. Our experience with Glenn leading up to our recruitment was that he'd been a real asset in that position. He's very uniquely qualified. He connects extremely well with people. He builds relationships well, and often with people that we would really struggle to have any kind of communication with or productive relationship at all. So he was a fantastic hire. That hire was made about a year ago, this past November. So we have a year of experience with Glenn in this position. We also had worked a little bit previously, prior to hiring Glenn, with Brandy Johnson, and she is the executive director of the community nonprofit Love One. Over the past year or so, we've worked exponentially more with her and her program as well, and both Glenn and Brandy will have a chance to tell you more about how that operates. For my experience, we all work within the metro area. We deal with some of the same problems or a lot of the same problems, maybe with slightly different rates and flows. As you know, Milwaukee shares a border with Portland, and we do deal with issues related to addiction, houselessness, and mental health on a regular basis. There isn't fantastic data related to that. There are a lot of gaps in that data. But I would say conservatively, we probably, at least twenty percent of all of our calls have a nexus to one or multiple of those three things, addiction, houselessness, or mental health crisis. And one of the goals of the program, when we brought services internal, was to have those services more readily available, services other than just traditional police response to calls. Then we wanted to, if possible, reduce the use and reliance of the criminal justice system to solve all of our problems, because that's often the main solution officers have for problems, is evaluate if a crime has occurred, and if so, our charge is appropriate. And that is one of the solutions that's often used by law enforcement, obviously. We also wanted to minimize the use of force, if that's possible. We wanted to make sure that we did that safely. So we wanted to make sure we were using a resource that's a civilian employee in mental health crisis situations in a way that was safe for that person. But we knew that we could use that person in addition to a police officer going to a call or at times instead of or rather than a police officer going to the call. And we knew that we were just gonna figure some of that out as we went, because we didn't have a lot of personal experience managing that kind of a resource. It's been a fantastic year for us, and I'm gonna let Glenn talk about more of his perspective and experiences. I did email over a PowerPoint, and if that's readily available, you can pull that up, because I know there's a little bit of data within that. And I also have it on a thumb drive, if that's easier. If for any reason that's complicated, it's not a big deal. So I'm gonna let Glenn talk more about his background and his experience that led him to this position, and then more about his experience and perspective of the work he's done this past year.
Hey, Mayor, hi, council members. Thank you for having me. A little bit about my background is, you know, I come, I'm a little rounded out. So I come from the addiction world and mental health, houselessness. I have a master's in addiction counseling and also have a master's in social work. So I'm a little rounded out in that area. A lot of the times, we know it goes hand in hand, and people, a lot of the, the community think that mental health is directly connected to or that I mainly work with our houseless population, and that's not true. Most of the people that I have come in contact with are in, are our neighbors. You know, they're, they're your neighbor, Milwaukee, Gladstone, Oregon City, Westland, Lake us, we go, any of the cities that we're in. It's usually somebody that's struggling, and I found, came to found out that a lot of that is centered around, you know, financial loneliness, COVID, you name it, trauma, childhood trauma, just, just a little bit of all of this. How do I move this along? Can't see nothing without these. All right, so I'll just, I'll just start with a little bit of, a little bit of a story here that's really great. Up there in the left-hand corner is Ray, and I can use Ray's name because he has become, he's become social media famous. He's on the county website, he's on the police station's website. Ray is over eighty years old. He's a veteran. He didn't have addiction issues. He didn't have mental health issues, but he was also stuck in the system of houselessness, and he was in a motel for almost two years and was connected to the American Legion in Milwaukee. We were connected luckily through, I was connected to him through the American Legion, where he is connected in Milwaukee, and they had him in a motel over by Mall two oh five. He's in a wheelchair, hardly can get around with, he can't get, not get around without the wheelchair. So we met with him. I was introduced through our Corporal Diffie Fund program at the police department. And we connected with Ray. We, we came in contact with him, found out that, you know, he did not, he was offered residence way out a hundred and eighty-six out in Gresham area, which was even farther away from his support system. Pictured there with him is our houseless liaison through Love One, and that's Don Holden. Don is also a veteran himself and was able to connect with Ray. We worked with Ray, the county, the veteran services, houseless outreach worker, Matt Furlough, Corporal Diffie, and the American Legion, and within three weeks, Ray was housed three blocks from the American Legion in the brand-new apartments. He's, he's doing really well. One of our officers, Officer Brad Walther, on his own time, soon as he got moved in, and Brad, you see the bracket, the back of Brad's head in the bottom picture, he went over there, took the doors off to make sure Ray could get around, set up his apartment for him. They worked to get his stuff out of storage and into a handicap storage in the apartment complex of seven acres where he's right by the police department, he's by American Legion. It's little things like that that, that I do outside of mental health, you know. Sure, Ray could have struggled with mental health in his life, but what he was struggling with in that moment was being close to where he wanted to be to his support system and really having that connection. Now he has a housing retention worker that stays connected with him as long as the voucher is good, and he's on a voucher for a minimum of ten years, and most likely will be extended. And being able to live a life in a brand-new apartment that's wheelchair-ready. The next one down the, below is just kind of what I do on scene, you know, and that's, that's what the behavioral health position is all about, is given the internal resource for the officers and being able to connect with those individuals that are struggling in the moment. You know, officers pull up on scene, it's like, they can really only take you to the hospital or they can arrest you if, if that's what it turns out to be. I can spend that time with that individual and just kind of get to the bottom of it and see what's really escalating the behavior in the moment and just work to, to build a relationship. People ask what I do for a living, and that's what I do, is I build relationships. I spend time with people. I get to know people. And I did that prior to this job. I like the saying, your mental health is, is a priority, your happiness is essential, and your self-care is necessary, right? Happiness can be a hard, a hard thing to find. You know, I show up to, on scene, I've been, and I'll get into some numbers. I show up on scene when people just, they don't want to be around anymore. They, they, you know, they just, I talk to them about death and what that looks like. I can actually have that conversation about what's, you know, what's driving it, what's your plan, and help them to get resources in the moment and stay connected, you know, for if you all know that there's mental health resources and we're lacking big time. So being able to have that internal is super important and, and building the relationship with the officers throughout this time has been amazing, because it's something that you don't have, it's like a relief of being, being able to have somebody there that can actually not only connect with the person, but they get to see the results, right? A lot of the times, if you don't see the results, you don't ever think anything's happening, right? They get to know, okay, this person, they generated seventeen reports in the last two months. Where are they, you know? Because they're, they're actually connected and they're doing better, and, and they're able to hear those stories really helps. You guys are getting the slideshow from the city council that I, presentation that I did, so there's a picture of our lovely police station. Here's some stats, and these are, you know, these are what really shows kind of what I do on a day-to-day basis. In, in the year that I was there, I met over two hundred and one unique Milwaukeeans, you know, people that are from Milwaukee struggling with mental health. I was on scene over seventy-eight times. And that's seventy-eight times that the officers had support within a quick amount of time, you know, because I'm, I'm there in Milwaukee, and I can just show up on scene. They can call me over the radio if I'm available and I'm not meeting with somebody. And even if I'm not on, on the clock, they just shoot the report to me, and I can follow up with that person. The follow-up is, is big. If we don't have, if we're just meeting with somebody one time and we're not following up with them, they're gonna continue to spiral, or they're gonna, they're, they're gonna feel that, okay, you offered me this resource, but where are they, right? So then it builds the relationships with the officers that a lot of people don't get a chance to build, and it helps the officers. I do outside referrals all the time, whether that be to Love One, Father's Heart, NAMI. NAMI is a great partnership. Project Hope, you know, so I can do referrals for peer. I like to get people that are struggling with mental health the opportunity to have a peer and come alongside them that have been through similar, probably not the same story, but similar. And I housed, in the first year, I housed thirteen people in, in Milwaukee that were on the streets of Milwaukee. I, I came to this position with a lot of connections in, in Clackamas County, because that's what I was doing for five years with Central City. I started as the outreach coordinator, and I ended as the program supervisor. So I built connections, and I build relationships for a living, and I don't just do that with the people I meet that I'm offering services to. That's gotta be all the way up to, you know, judges and lawyers and the county and wherever else. Everywhere I go, I build relationships, because they're gonna need me in a moment, and I'm gonna need them. So it's the same internal with the officers. And you all know we're in opioid crisis, so sixty-three of those, two hundred and one individuals have been opioid-related, whether they're houseless, overdose, overdose death, and I am able to come along and support the family members. That's an important part of the behavioral health role, too, is a lot of the times, we only have like one certain number that they can call to kind of just, you know, talk about the death or loss that they just had of a family member. So I'm able to support them and help walk them through some resources, and I think that's really important, too.
Can I briefly inject? Yeah. So one of the things that goes hand in hand, what some of the things Glenn is saying, is that prior to having this position internally, like I said, excuse me, most of the time, or often, those resources were not available to us, because they were just spread too thin throughout the entire county. For our officers, what that means is they get accustomed to, hey, when I need this, it's, it's not readily available. It's definitely not here within the city. The underlying message is it's not that much of a priority, and why should we even keep asking when we know it's not inside the city? If it's available at all, it's probably thirty or forty minutes away. And these are mental health crises, they, they're in the moment. They have to be dealt with now. You can't put them on hold for an hour or a day. So if this is a priority, then this, then our city decided we have to make it a priority for us. We can't just look to the county to provide this resource. The, the big change was the officers now feel supported. They have immediate access to that resource. Now, we don't have it twenty-four hours a day, but we have it. Glenn works four-ten's with us, so we have it forty hours a week. And he also has a working relationship with Love One, where he works one day a week with them. So we really get him five days a week, or fifty hours a week. But our officers feel supported, because often the way an officer feels is I, we don't have solutions for you. There is no solution for this that I have. There's very few resources. Those resources are often unavailable, and they're usually hard to navigate. And I don't have four hours to dedicate to this call, because two more calls just came in. So my hands are tied, you have to move along, stop doing what you were doing, and we've got to go. Or else our solution is we trespass you, or we arrest you, or we take you to a hospital on a P O H. It's a very frustrating experience for officers to repeat that over and over and over again, often with the same people. So it's a drastic change when they have access to a resource like this that has a totally different set of both background, experience, passions, someone that wants to help people with that type of a problem versus, you know, maybe what officers feel like I signed up to help people, but this isn't my passion or my expertise. So I don't feel well-suited for the problems I'm dealing with every day now. And these solutions don't really naturally exist within the community. So we give them someone that's better able to understand that is their passion, and they're better able to navigate those services and help folks connect with other resources in addition to them that exist throughout the county, that people like Glenn are just more experts in, and they know how to navigate them and help someone through those systems. So the, the impact of the officers is tremendous. And that's overlooking the impact of the individual that's actually getting real service for problems that are very real and they repeat over and over and over again. There's very few of these people that we dealt with just once over the course of six months. Most of them we might deal with. And some of the bad instances with bad outcomes, we've, we dealt with them eighteen times. And eighteen times they ended without any significant injury, but eventually it doesn't end that way. Well, that's, that's a real failure of the system. So it's been a drastically different experience this year. Having more of resources internal and then expanding the efforts to, to work with our other local partners that are also passionate about providing these kinds of services.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know how much more time I have. I'm pretty much to the end of the presentation. But I think just to tag on what the chief said, you know, a lot of the times too, and I've noticed when officers have to be on scene with somebody for a long period of time, it's taken away or calls are, have to be put on hold, you know. You guys know as well as Milwaukee, you're not a huge police force, right? So a lot of the times they'll be able to, in a mental health crisis, assess the, the, the situation. And most of the times they can take off and I can be there and, and talk with the individual. My goal is always to not be able, not have to use a P O H, which is a hold, but to get somebody to go voluntarily, whether they're most likely going to go A M R, but, you know, by medical transport. But then I can follow up with them. And, and sometimes the, that's not even needed, you know, just I can, I'm able to assess that plan, you know. Is there a plan in the moment to end your life, you know, are you, is, are, are they escalating? What is the plan? And we can work sometimes with safety plans where they don't even have to access the hospital system too. It's mostly already overloaded. I think I'm going to turn it over to the, our community partner. It's been great. The partnership is great too. So I talked a little bit about Don. And he, in the beginning, I was doing all of the houselessness and the mental health. As you can see, I, I worked to house thirteen people, but having a partnership where Don comes alongside and is able to really connect with our houseless population in the city. We've worked together with Central City Concern, four D and loved one. And now we have them, as you know, a lot of our houses population access the library. So we have those three services now in the library every Tuesday morning at ten o'clock where they can come alongside the individuals. So we're really ramping up services and the officers now have cards to be able to give to people where they didn't have a resource. They'd be like, yeah, well, because Father's Heart is all we have here in Clackamas for a day center. So most hang out in the libraries in our cities, so. That's been a really great partnership. Oh, yeah, it was just, that's me, so. Oh, there's not, oh, well, here, you can switch receipts.
Good evening. So Brandy Johnson. And to tag on to what Chief and Glenn were talking about, really where, where we come in is a holistic approach, right? We can try to change the system, which we're all working on, and we can try to implement solutions. And at the end of the day, the individuals that we're interacting with require individual solutions. Not everyone comes from the same space or is in the same place ready for the next steps. So what we've done, so actually I think it's like two years ago that you came to me and were like, hey, do you know this guy? And showed me a picture of Don. And I was like, yes, yes, I do. He's one of our staff. And he's like, I really like him. And so Glenn and I were like, let's figure out how to get him in Milwaukee. So not too much longer, we were able to hire Don. He was already volunteering with us and he is now, works closely with the police department and is dedicated, as loved one staff, to the Milwaukee Police Department and Milwaukee. And as Glenn mentioned, he works with one of the outreach workers from Central City Concern, so they tag team things often, so they're not going out alone. And the biggest thing is building that relationship where officers can trust they're going to show up and do what they need to do. That when they make that call, like we already touched on, there's somebody that's responding because the mental health crisis team is very stretched thin. And sometimes they're out in Sandy, Estacada, they're in Malala, they're covering a lot of territory. And it does take transport time and, you know, when you're supporting somebody in a situation, it's not always a five-minute in and out thing. They could be there for hours. And sometimes it's somebody that we're already well acquainted with through our laundry services or our showers, our outreach. We also have housing. We run a trash program and we do housing retention work. So it's really a pretty much a full continuum of care. And then I also oversee Father's Heart. And so we have the day center and we have the hotel transitional shelter program. And so oftentimes, we're already familiar with the folks that are coming across the radios and can provide some additional information. And sometimes it's, excuse me, a quick call to one of our staff, hey, do you recognize this name or this person? Like, oh, yeah. And you know what helps de-escalate them? Offer them a cigarette or give them, this one particular person is notorious throughout our areas. And if you offer her a Pepsi, that's the special trick. It's, so it's, it's like businesses will call us and say this person, you know, and so we work collaboratively with the libraries. We get Pitts reports from Milwaukee Library. We work closely with municipal courts, community court and circuit court and the DA's office. We just met with Oregon City PD yesterday about what it would look like to work on adding an outreach person similar to how we have Don in Milwaukee. As well as someone to work with the municipal court and doing some diversionary action plans like Lead does. And, and just helping them talk through that process, you know, do they want it to be an internal hire? Do they want to do a contract position? What's that look like? So really just providing some input into like how we can collaboratively work together and provide those resources. Because that's really the heart of loved one is meeting, showing up, meeting basic needs and figuring out how best to support all community partners. It's not just focused on how do we serve the houseless community. Because right now, we have a, a, what I say is often, we're trying to put a Band-Aid on the fire hose of homelessness. But we also have to address the other end, the entry point. What's that cause and how, how soon can we intervene? I met with Mr. Hunt from NAMI last week about what's it look like if we do a partnership with our hotel program to have some, some specific rooms dedicated for youth or young adults who are aging out of and or behaviorally can no longer stay at home? How do we, how do we partner with them? Because they've got intensive case management, but if they have nowhere to go for move out of, of family home to somewhere else stable, you know, that is a quick pathway to not maintaining therapy, medications, all those basic things. So that's really where loved one comes in is, is just how do we support the work that's being done? And I will just end with, I'm super excited that you all are exploring this opportunity for Gladstone and we are happy to support however that looks.
So our, our experience has been the level of service that we get from having this internal is just impossible to compare to the previous level of exist, of service that we're getting from a detached partner that doesn't really live in our problems in the same way. It's much different when this is a city of Milwaukee employee and they're committed to your city versus the entire county. The level of service is substantially different for us. There would be no comparison if you asked any of our officers. They feel supported. And they love having that resource and they use it often. It's so nice to know there's a tool in the toolbox for this that can help me with this. It's just a drastically different feeling. And then all of the B H U, Behavioral Health Workers in the county work closely together. So if Lake Oswego or, or Oregon City has a problem and they don't have that resource, whether it's out of town or they're stretched thin because they have multiple things going on. I know Glenn has and will cover any of those other cities if he's available. And I know that he's provided that resource to Gladstone. And we wrote that into our position when we developed it because we knew there are only a couple of cities left that didn't have this resource in-house. So that's the way we want the system to work, is to overlap and cover for each other. But as partner cities, we, we have an interest in your wellbeing as well. And when we need something from Gladstone PD, they always have and do provide that. That's the type of partnership you have when you have a resource that's shareable. You know, Glenn doesn't work seven days a week. So the more of these people we have that are committed to cities, the more resources we have to share and ultimately support our communities and our, our agencies. And then I, I know we've, we've probably used up all of our time, but if you folks have questions, we're happy to.
Well, I want to say thank you to all three of you. I, I heard some things that, that really were good to hear. First of all, you know, your willingness to share resources with other jurisdictions, wonderful. We always hear from our, our fire department personnel about the calls from one community going into another. And even when we didn't have that direct contract with Clackamas Fire, our own local fire department often came to the assistance of other communities. So that's a principle that small cities work by. Speaking of small cities, you know, you read in the paper about Portland sometimes closing down the, the, the places where homeless people have, have gathered and tried to live and, and not even being able to keep track of the names of the people that lived in those places before they move on to a relocation. So one of the great things I think about handling some of these issues on a smaller scale, a more manageable scale, is that you can have those kinds of relationships. You know people by name, you know their situation, you know what led them to the circumstances that they're in and maybe the things that are really helpful in, you know, in de-escalating a situation if they're in a crisis. Finally, we get a good report from our police department every month. And one aspect of that report is on training of officers. There are a variety of types of training that, that police officers are required to do. And I believe that mental health is one aspect of that. But I liked what you were saying, that when Glenn goes out on a call and he's working with officers, even if they've had that mental health training, but may not be their passion like it is his. Have to think there's some good learning in that process going on. And if we can strengthen our police officers' ability to work with people in mental health crisis, even if we're not lucky enough to have someone like Glenn there, I think that's probably better than the, just the book training or however it's done. So I think this kind of a program will enhance our ability to serve the people in a variety of ways. And I'm really glad we're exploring it. I want to give other councillors a, an opportunity to ask some questions. Councillor Alexander.
So where does Gladstone get someone like Glenn? I mean, do you have, do you have friends that, that pursue this kind of, of position? Or do you know other people that are interested like you are to?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, there's, there's good people out there that have the lived experience and the education to do it. We have Val in Oregon City, we have, you know, so the other cities have them, so. And there's a network of VHS or, you know, Behavioral Health Support that, that really like to get not sit behind a desk and do therapy all day. You know, my wife is a therapist and she does virtual therapy and I couldn't do that. But she tells me all the time, she couldn't do my job because she doesn't like being a person that much. So there's definitely a breed of us that like to, to do that and be able to support cities and, and love. We, can be, just got one. So it's, it's spreading and, and it's the way to go. So, yeah, there's people out there and there's good people.
And, and there's a lot of people that will help you recruit that position because people like Glenn and Brandy and the Lake Oswego B H U worker, they all want good people in the system. So when you advertise that position, they will help you recruit it by spreading the word to anyone they know in that circle that might be interested.
And Chief and Administrator Betts, we're kind of in the process of, of looking for this already. And are, are, are we, are we going out to hire our own or, or isn't it, I, I believe we've looked at this issue a little bit already.
Yes, so I believe Clackamas County will be discussing the funding of the position tomorrow. And then once that direction is given to Chief Schmerber, we will be involved in the process of hiring the, the agreement will need to come to council for approval. And we're hoping that we can do that in either February or the first part of March.
Okay, so this is much more imminent than just kind of a dream of ours in the future. We've already begun to take some of those steps. Yeah, very good. Other councillors, questions, comments?
Hi, Mindy Gerlinson. I, I just want to say, I think the work that you're doing is phenomenal. I've always said you have to meet people where they are. And nobody knows a group of kids better than their teacher. And clearly, the citizens in need in Milwaukee are much better off for knowing somebody like you. So great, awesome work. And I'm just going to throw a jab to the state of Oregon and say that I wish that your position was a state mandate and not some of the other ones we have to fund. Thanks.
Councillor Huckabee.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you all for coming today. It's inspiring. I'm, I'm keeping my eye on Milwaukee as my hometown and you guys are doing great things there. I am so happy that we have a model, our, our chief has a model to kind of reflect on and get advice from to make it successful here in Gladstone. It's very much needed. So thank you all for your time and thank you, loved one. My son and I have had a chance to volunteer at shower nights and it's incredible. So thank you all. I appreciate your work.
Councillor Roberts.
Same as Councillor Huckabee. Just thank you for coming this evening. Like Mayor Milch said, the small town functions on that inter-agency reciprocity. So thank you for providing that for us and I hope that down the road, that's something that we can return to you. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much for coming and presenting to us tonight.
You bet. Thank you, folks.
Administrator Betts, do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda for this evening?
No additions or corrections, but Councillor Garlington introducing herself reminded me that we have a new transcriptionist that will be doing our minutes. So tonight, it would be helpful if you can state who you are before you do make comments until that person can become familiar with our voices.
Good advice. Thank you. All right. Mayor Milch introduced the consent agenda. Our, our typical consent agenda, including the minutes of our December twelfth meeting, approval of November bank balances, the budget report for the period ending eleven thirty twenty-three, approval of November check register and department head monthly reports, which I always commend to you for your reading. It really is a place to learn about what goes on behind the scenes in this community. Those reports are for December twenty, twenty twenty-three. Would anyone in the council like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented?
I actually have a, not an item to pull, but an item that I have a question about. Section five, page twenty-nine. As we all fumble there. Speaking is Councillor Sierra Cook. Pronouns are they/them. So on page five twenty-nine, there's a note that almost three hundred thousand dollars in fines have been waived as a result of Governor Kotek signing a remission order. That's a significant amount of potential revenue that the city has seen be waived away. I guess my question is for Administrator Betts. How does that affect the city's budget moving forward?
Well, thank you for your question. I would suggest that you pull that item from the consent agenda and approve the rest. And we will approve this item separately. So do you want to go ahead and do that, Mayor Milch?
Okay, so Councillor Cook moved that we pull the, the report from our municipal court from the consent agenda. And since that is a part of all the all the departmental reports, I guess it will just say we're, we're pull the items five from the consent agenda. So will you consent to pulling that item? I see heads nodding. Okay, so is there a motion to approve items one through four of the consent agenda?
Some of them.
All right, is there a second? Councillor Huckabee moved and Councillor Alexander seconded that we approve items one through four of the consent agenda. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Councillor Garlington?
Yes.
Councillor Huckabee?
Yes.
Councillor Alexander?
Yes.
Councillor Rieckel?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, the consent agenda items one through four are approved and we noted in that the Councillor Rieckel is present now. Thank you. So your question to Administrator Betts, let's see about responding to that.
So I want to be clear that it, there is not a financial impact to the Gladstone budget of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Because a lot of the revenue that we collect goes to the state based off of a percentage. So even though I don't have the exact answer on what that breakdown is, I can follow up with the court administrator to get that for you. But I think that But I think that's a good message to remind everybody that that's not a impact to our general fund.
Good. Yeah, that's a big number. It would be if it was.
Yes. So just to clarify, it's, uh, there is some impact, but negligible. Is that not that 300,000 number?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And this is the not, not the first time we've had one of these situations where, uh, fines were, uh, forgiven. And, um, and we managed our, our court, um, our court officer managed to, uh, you know, uh, keep us informed about how that affected budget. So I'm glad you're asking the same kind of questions. All right. So, yes.
That that was a good, Counsel Alexander, that was a good, uh, question because the day when I met with Administrator Betts, I asked about the, uh, the Western Agency Collections Department revenue. And if that, well, you know, do we still pay them? Do we not pay them? Do we just write that off? And, and she said, she sure, you know, said that we don't, we don't have to use them unless they're collecting and they only got a percentage of what they collected. So now I guess nobody gets anything from it. So, yeah, but if, but if it doesn't affect the budget, that's great.
All right. Good. We're, we're all better informed on this and that's important. Uh, some of that behind the scenes stuff is not always well known. Counselor Huckabee.
I'm not going to repeat my name because you just said it. I just want to say what a great example of Governor Kotek removing barriers for people to be successful in life and get to and from work and be able to succeed. So kudos to Governor Kotek.
All right. With that positive statement, I will accept a motion to approve the reports of the department, uh, or the department head monthly reports for December 2023.
I move to approve the, uh, consent agenda number five, department head monthly reports.
Second.
All right. Moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Huckabee. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. This item is approved. Administrator Betts, do we have any correspondence to address tonight?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Um, this is the time in our meeting, we have our monthly report from Clackamas Fire District. I am glad that there have been no emergency calls to pull you guys away because you're here a lot later in the meeting, uh, than you usually are. But if you'll come forward, we'll welcome your report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, members of the council, uh, congratulations, Council President Roberts and, uh, Counselor Cook for the, uh, the appointment to the, or the, uh, getting voted into tonight. Um, you know, as, as I-
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt for just a moment. For the record, can you please state your name?
That was what, uh, I was advised to do and I could not follow the simplest of instructions. I apologize, Jackie. My name is Nick Brown, Fire Chief for Clackamas Fire. You know, as, as you start a new year, you reflect on the last year. And there's four things that come to mind as I reflect back on the last year of, of, of Clackamas Fire. And there's really four words that come to mind. The first is gratitude. The gratitude that we have to be able to serve in these, uh, uh, serve our public, serve the communities that we serve, uh, be able to serve you. Grateful for the relationships that we have, um, the relationships that I have with, with the two chiefs that you, um, just heard from a little bit ago. And the, the stellar example that they are of public servants. And gratitude for the men and women of Clackamas Fire. Service, the level of service that the Clackamas firefighters perform day in and day out. The selfless service that they give, um, of themselves, the things that they see on a daily basis. The mental judo that, that goes on with some of the things that they see and that they're exposed to. Passion, passion to be better than they were the day before. And they do that for you. They don't do it for accolades. They don't do it for self-gain. They do it because of love for serving the, the, the communities that they've raised their right hand to serve. And, and last but not least, and it kind of ties in a little bit to services grit. We've, we've been through a lot as an organization. Um, and, and this last year, we had some pretty trying, uh, incidents that we responded to. Big fires and, and big fires, one right after another. It wasn't like we had a three alarm fire and then it would be a month later. We were having three alarm and two alarm fires within the span of, 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 of a week. Uh, we had the Camp Creek fire that, that pushed us to the limits and the men and women of Clackamas Fire stood up and answered the call. And so I'm just super proud of them. Couple of small things I want to touch on that are going on currently with Clackamas Fire. We just graduated an academy of 15. Uh, why is that important? Well, because those 15, um, we were able to increase staffing at five community fire stations, uh, throughout, uh, our, our coverage area. One of which is Station 15, which is just across the bridge. So that's your second DuPumper that comes into Gladstone if there's a, uh, escalating incident. The, uh, the other thing I wanted to touch on is that we're about to start another academy of 12. And this is going to be that cycle for the next five years for us. We're bringing on, uh, just a little bit over a hundred firefighters, uh, to, to Clackamas Fire family. We, we just launched out, uh, for an application process for a firefighter. And in my time here at Clackamas Fire, we have never received this many, as many hits to our application process. We had 12,000 hits to our application process. Now out of that, through the process, we have 446 applicants that will be taken forward to, uh, the interview process. And I'm just excited about it and I'm excited about it because as I was scanning through, I'm not breaking civil service rules, Brian, so don't get me in trouble. But as I was scanning through, there was a lot of, of veterans, a lot more females than I've seen, uh, on before. And, and so I'm really excited to see the quality of candidates that we have. And but before I turn over, Brian, I'd just like to answer any questions you have, uh, for me.
I just wanted to say when I saw that picture of the people, uh, threatening to me, academy.
Yeah.
I'm so excited for all of you. This is Mindy Gerlington. Sorry. Um, and way to go, way to go, you guys. I mean, people don't sign up for the academy because you don't have a good reputation. They want to be a part of what you have and that speaks volumes to me. So thank you for coming to us.
Thank you.
We're, we're blessed for sure.
It's an honor for us.
Thanks.
All righty. Well, good evening. Uh, Brian Stewart, Assistant Chief with Clackamas Fire. The Fire Chief covered all my speaking points, so we'll keep it short. Just to, to, uh, kind of your comment, uh, Counselor Garlington, I had the opportunity at this last, uh, uh, graduation ceremony to, to sit and observe. Sometimes we have roles, sometimes you get to sit and observe. And I, I commented to, to, uh, the Fire Chief and, uh, a couple of the members of the, the cadre, the, the academy cadre that was, uh, primarily responsible for instructing, uh, the recruits and then helped, uh, do the, do the presentation. There is not, there was, there has not been a moment in my firefighting career, uh, that I could say was a better, uh, moment to reflect on why I got in, uh, why our, why we serve. And, uh, I, I think I told the chief, like it, if we had filmed it, if we could capture just the, the, the natural element, just the people, because it's, it's, it's a private event. It's just us talking to each other. Uh, but it would be the most amazing recruitment video because it, it gets people's hearts. It was like why we're there. It gets to the heart of why we're there and, and, and at least me, made me want to be part of something special, which I knew we were, but it just reminded me, man. Anyway, uh, I did want to touch on, since you brought up the, the, the recruitment, the 446 and, and some of the changing demographics of our applicants. That, that was not accidental. That wasn't just a change in the economy. We have over a period of time made changes to how we do recruitment, how we provide training, because our intent was to reduce and, and remove barriers to being part of public service, being part of Clackamas Fire. So it's been very intentional, uh, of how we've gotten, gotten here. But with that, we have gotten some great people and I'll, I'll keep this a little short. Uh, and you, you heard the chief mention passion. And I was thinking about this as we were sitting and, and, uh, Chief Schmerber was introducing Trevor as the new public, uh, police records specialist. And you, you listened to his background or Ian's background from last month when he got sworn in. And just the caliber of people listening to Glenn, uh, there's some fantastic people in public service. Uh, there's some fantastic people sitting up in front of us. But with that, we also had the opportunity with the change in the new year, the recruits coming out to, uh, shuffle positions, promote individuals. And we had a number of promotions, uh, and one just to highlight, congratulations to all of them. But one to highlight is, uh, Captain Mike Bauer, who for Clackamas Fire was the first captain that, that got to serve in the Gladstone Fire Station, is promoting to Battalion Chief. Uh, we have three battalions, one out east out in Boring, one in, off of Lake Road and one down south, kind of by Hilltop in Oregon City. Uh, and Mike Bauer, uh, is going to be your Battalion Chief, uh, on one of the shifts. He's, uh, super excited to be here, super excited to be back serving, uh, the, the, the city of Gladstone, just in a different role. It's kind of cool to see him there. Uh, the other pieces, uh, appreciate no one, uh, catching Christmas trees on fire last month. I think we talked about that. So thanks for not doing that. We did have one small fire, but moving forward and as we look at weather, uh, we prepare for weather both, uh, from a response side, making sure the apparatus are ready, making sure the equipment's ready, making sure we staff up when we need to. Uh, and we have a, we have a, a really talented pool of operations folks who, who keep the, uh, Fire Chief apprised and work to make sure that our plans are coordinated with law enforcement, other fire, fire agencies. So we're working through that, uh, as, as weather's coming in this time. But also just from a, from a safety tip, one of the things that we look at is heating. Um, and as weather gets cold, people start making choices and they sometimes make the choices, the, the only choices that they have, which can be using a barbecue to warm their house. Um, so, you know, to just as a, as a point, carbon monoxide detectors are relatively inexpensive, uh, easy to install. Um, and if people need services, uh, reach out to someone, whether it's, uh, Milwaukee PD, whether it's Clackamas Fire, whether it's the city of Gladstone, there's lots of resources to help those in need. Uh, we just want to make sure everyone is safe and healthy this winter. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you. Um, so yesterday I was in my home and I heard 322 go up Herford. So I checked pulse point, um, as so many of us do. And it looked like there was a residential fire on, I believe it was Oakfield. And there was a lot of engines on there. Do you guys have any updates? And if not, that's totally fine. I know it just happened yesterday.
Yeah, literally picked up my phone to text Jackie and they recalled it. So it was a outside fire. It had not extended into the house.
Okay.
I like those kinds.
So it literally was like this and then first engine 322 arrived and they gave the size up and they immediately, yeah, they recalled immediately. Once they got there, they saw it was an exterior fire, but the initial reports were a garage fire is what it came in as. And so that's why you had all the resources coming.
Yeah.
Once 322 arrived, they, they recalled everybody.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Other questions?
I'm just continuously blown away by how you guys have zero issues with recruitment. I imagine probably not a lot of issues with retention with just what an amazing organization you guys run. I'm very proud to be partnered with that and thankful for you guys' involvement in our community. So thank you. Thank you.
Oh, and just to assure you, we have already heard from our administration and the chief about what we're doing for the, for the cold weather. They are on it.
Chief Brown, Chief Stewart, we're, we're grateful to you both. Uh, this report was well worth waiting for. We appreciate too, the positive things you have to say about the other agencies in the community with, with, with which you work. This whole teamwork across agencies, the reciprocation of services, uh, it's what make things, uh, really work effectively and efficiently in our community. So thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. This is the time in our agenda where we give an opportunity for people to, uh, make announcements of city events. Uh, do we have anybody in person or online to make such an announcement tonight? Uh, Tammy Bennett.
We do. Robert Everett, and I'll bring him on here in just a moment.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, good evening, uh, counselors and, uh, Mayor Milch and congratulations, uh, uh, Sierra. On Counselor Cook, uh, on your, on your victory. Um, my name is Robert Everett, um, and I live here in Gladstone. And I would be there except that, uh, I came down with the flu today. So, um, I thought it best that I, uh, remain at home. And, um, of course I'm here, um, to do my, uh, monthly thing, although I've missed a few times, but, um, one is the, um, is our, um, you know, the bingo. It's, uh, bingo night in Gladstone. It's going to be next, uh, next Friday night, um, January 19th. Hopefully the weather will, uh, will cooperate. Um, I think this Friday might've been a problem. And, uh, same, same sort of, uh, um, organization, um, you know, doors open, uh, basically. Tickets go on sale for 30, doors open at 4:50. Uh, bingo starts at 5:30. And, uh, of course we'll be selling food and, and drinks. So, uh, hopefully we'll, uh, see, um, um, a number of people out there, uh, next, uh, next Friday night at the, uh, community center. Also, um, I had talked before about the closed closet. Um, it is every Saturday, um, from, uh, basically from 10 to 12. And, um, basically people can bring in their clothes. Other families can come and, uh, and go through, uh, and pick out a number of the clothes. We volunteer there, a number of other groups volunteer there. I have a feeling this Saturday will be, uh, will be a little bit slow. In fact, probably won't be open. Um, so we can all hope that, uh, um, the weather's not too bad. That's really all I have to say. If anybody has any questions, uh, uh, feel free.
Counselor Huckabee has a question for you.
Thank you. Bob, is it, can you confirm that the closed closet is right now currently only accepting, um, packages of undergarments and socks?
That's what it sounds like to me.
There's a whole bunch of people to come drop off clothes and.
Well, the thing is, is that last time we were there, there weren't many, we didn't have any many, um, many clothes bags overall. So, but I don't know. They do have quite, uh, quite a bit there. So, um, now underwear and socks, um, both our club, um, spent close to, uh, 2,000 and, um, on underwear and socks. And so did, uh, the Gladstone Education Found- Foundation. Um, so, um, they, they did get quite a bit of, uh, you know, quite a bit of money, um, for, for the, for those two. Um, as people may not be aware of, those are things that they can't accept. Um, underwear and socks are, uh, two items that they, uh, they need new every single year. So, um, but anyway, that's, that's what I understand. And, uh,
Thank you. We'll just consider this a plug as the closed closet needs underwear and socks that are packaged unused.
That's, there you go. I have a feeling again, this Saturday, I'm not sure there'll be much opportunity to be able to, uh, to either drop off or, uh, sell, but we'll see. Who knows what the weather brings. So.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bob, for keeping us informed on those events. We appreciate your joining us by zoom.
Thank you, Mike, and take care and, uh, and good evening, everyone. And, uh, boy, have a wonderful and stay safe this weekend.
Feel better, Dr. Bob.
Oh, yeah, I was pretty sick. So I don't, that doesn't happen very often, but anyway, thanks. Bye.
All right. We, we move ahead to our regular agenda. We have two items. Uh, first is the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, grant to enact parking reform and establish a town center in accordance with Oregon Administrative Rule OAR 660-012-0420-0450. Administrator Betts, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Heather Austin with us tonight? Great. As you know, there's a lot of work ahead of us in regards to two pragmatic obligations to meet the state's climate-friendly and equitable communities laws. One is parking reform and the Gladstone Town Center. Last April, DLCD was here to talk about options. At that time, we said we need more information. Since then, they have adopted final rules and we are obligated to work through these for the next year and a half. 3J Consulting on behalf of the city applied for a grant that will help us, uh, pay for the process of implementing these rules. And so I will have Heather go over a little bit of the grant and the requirements. And our grant policy requires that the city council accept a grant before we move forward.
Thank you, Administrator Betts.
Thank you, Administrator Betts. If everyone can hear me all right, okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Milch and members of the council. It's nice to be here with you this evening. As Administrator Betts said, we did receive a successful award of $60,000 from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to complete the required climate-friendly and equitable communities work, which also happens to overlap with our required metro town center work. So we're able to meld those two projects into one. The delivery dates that those are required by statute vary over the next 18 to 30 months. So we're going to take the projects in about five different tasks, as is outlined in the packet this evening. We do expect to convene a Stakeholder Advisory Committee and Administrator Betts and your Economic Development Coordinator and myself have been talking about who we should reach out to regarding that. And I believe in your February meeting, we'd like to talk to you more about that. But the key components of this project will include designating our climate-friendly area that's also our town center, determining what zoning code changes need to be made, as well as any comprehensive plan changes, any transportation issues, land use, those sorts of things. And then also the parking piece, which will come as a separate package. That's more citywide and not specifically related to a town center or a climate-friendly area, but can be funded by this grant, which is good news because I think that will take a bit of time for us to work through as well. So our plan is to use the city's downtown revitalization plan from 2017, the downtown core overlay that you adopted last year, and the new Main Street affiliate status and bundle all of that together, work it through the process to make sure we're complying with state and metro requirements and implement a new town center plan that meets all of those requirements and hopefully brings benefit to the city, prompting some economic development, especially in the Portland Avenue corridor and beyond. Are there any questions that I can answer about this?
Heather, I just want to say it, it's, it's really good that we have quite a, an extensive timetable ahead of us. You know, this is not one of those things where we have to rush it by the end of the, or the middle of the year or a very short timeframe. So I think we can invest the time that we need to do this job right. And I'm glad too that it coincides with our making economic development one of our number one, or our number one council goals. Because this will really contribute to all our efforts in that area, particularly regarding our downtown commercial zone. So it's good timing for us. It's good timing for where the city wants to be and I'm glad that we have the staff on hand who are already focused on these issues to move forward with it. Are there questions or comments from council members? Counselor Garland has a question.
I'm going to ask about money. So we're, this grant is $60,000 and I see here on 88 where it outlines how that $60,000 is to be spent. And I'm wondering if you have a ballpark figure, Administrator Betts, of what the additional costs out of the Gladstone general budget or whichever budget may need to pay additional funding for the project as a whole that is mandated by the state of Oregon.
The $60,000 will cover the specific tasks identified in this staff report. Funds that aren't included will be my time, economic development, staff person's time, but other than that, the $60,000 should, should cover these costs for this, which is good because if we didn't get the grant, then it would all be subsidized through the general fund to complete that.
Thank you for the clarification.
And for further clarification, sometimes when we talk about grant money, there's, there's a match required. Is that, does that apply in this case?
No, but even if it did, then my time and, and Marcy's time would qualify towards that match.
That's helpful understanding. So it's not always a cash match we have to come up with. We can come up with an equivalency in staff time. Very good to know. Counselor Alexander.
Yes, my question is about the money. We need to do it. We have to do it anyway. So the money's going to help offset. Once we accept this grant, do we, can we go out for other grants that could help or are related to this?
I don't believe so, but I will have Heather respond to that.
That's a great question. We do believe that this grant will cover the required work that we need to do to comply with the current state law. There is an additional services component available through the climate-friendly and equitable communities work. And that includes a market analysis that DLCD can provide. So we have requested that to be one of our base documents that comes directly from the state rather than us hiring a sub consultant to do that work. We haven't heard back yet if we will get that. Otherwise, we will have to use some of this $60,000 to perform some of that work to hire an economic development sub consultant. But I'm hopeful that DLCD will either provide that or provide some additional funding for that.
All right. Any other questions from council members before we take a a motion regarding the recommendation of staff on this? It's on at the bottom of page eight dash one.
I would make a motion to approve DLCD grant to enact parking reform and establish a town center in accordance with OAR 660-012-0420-0450.
I hope I can, our transcriber can get all those numbers. Counselor Roberts has made a motion. Is there a second?
Counselor Huckabee, second.
Counselor Huckabee has seconded the motion. Any further discussion from members of the council? All right. City Recorder, will you call the roll, please?
Counsel, Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The motion is approved unanimously. The, the grant is accepted.
And Mayor Milch, I would like to just formally acknowledge that in the city council rules, there's a process set forth that the city has the ability to create an ad hoc committee and that, as Heather mentioned, we will be soliciting stakeholders. We will be bringing those names back to you in February so that the council can formally appoint them. But we also need a representative from the city council and from the Planning Commission, and we're working with DLCD and Metro. So you don't have to answer who the city councillor rep will be tonight, but please be prepared for somebody to volunteer in February for that position, and we will say the same to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And this is one of those times when all those good relationships that have been formed in our community by having both city councillors and city staff working on these economic development issues. We should see formation of a very strong group of stakeholders, which have a strong interest in this personally and also can act on behalf of the city and advising. So I'm grateful for, for people who will step up for that. All right, we have one last item on our regular agenda. And that is an update on the 2023-2024 City Council adopted goals.
And thank you, Mayor. I'm very pleased to present an update on the city council goals. We held a department head retreat in December and all of our management discussed the goals, which as you will see are included in the packet. And the city has four focus areas. One is economic development. The second is infrastructure. The third is communications and engagement, and the fourth is parks. And then that correlates with each of those goals is that we have outcomes and we have strategies. And so you have a comprehensive report in your packet on the progress that has been made, and there's been a lot. There's been some wonderful things that have moved forward. And you will also see that the report outlines what the process is for moving them forward in 2024. Corresponding with this report, you have an agenda planning calendar in your packet that has an outline of when we propose to come to you with either work sessions or policy decisions that need to be made in correlation with these goals. I will say that tomorrow we have a bid opening on a, a very big infrastructure project that we've been working on for many years. And in February, we're going to be bringing that contract to you. Lot of work going to be taking place, especially in public works in the parks in this next year. So my intent was not to go through each section or, or discuss the goals, but to have a public document for anybody that's interested in reading about the progress that's been made. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'll just say that for the benefit of the public that, you know, is not a part of this process usually and doesn't see kind of how it happens. When we have our annual goal-setting session at the beginning of each biennium, we get a lot of input from the department heads, from our city staff. We can sort of set overarching goals at a high level. You know, we want economic development in the community. We want to improve our infrastructure. But the actual projects that need to be done in order to achieve those goals are really the responsibility of our staff, working under our city administrator. And so when you read the results and all the things that were done and all the meetings we had and all the things, actions we adopted, it actually almost looks a little boring. It looks, it's, you know, there's not a little, a lot of high-profile, big stuff like the completion of a library. Everybody's driving past that corner and watching the progress of that library. Boy, we're going to know when it's ready and when it's open. When we decide on which streets are going to be paved and choose a contractor to finish that work and get the work done, that kind of is something that the public doesn't really know about. And so it's great to have this stuff summarized for us, to have it presented here. And for me, the most important thing is knowing all the work that went behind it, all the things that we didn't, you know, we barely had to think about as a city council because it got done by our staff. So I just want to say thank you for that. And, and let's hear from other council members on comments or questions that you have.
I, I'll reiterate the note I sent into Administrator Betts. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You make us look you know, like we do so much work and our staff is phenomenal. They get things done, their i's are dotted, their t's are crossed, and everything is finished and doesn't have problems thereafter. So thank you again for all the work you guys do. It's, it's a pleasure to work with you.
Any other comments? Because this, this leads me to want to go in a different, another direction here.
Well, I think, I think, I think it looks great and we've gotten a lot of done, I mean, in one year. And at the end of next year, that's going to be a cram-packed two years where everyone in the community can see what we've done. And that is part to the administration.
Well, it, it occurs to me, I keep hearing a consistent message here that we are very happy with the administration of our city. We are under a contractual, oh, Counselor Rieckel, go ahead and make your comment.
All I was going to do is reiterate what everybody else is saying. I'm so, I don't want to get verklempt, but I'm very grateful for our staff and very, I'm just blown away by the hard work and the dedication to our city. It's just phenomenal. It's so wonderful to see the progress that we are making as a community and our staff's dedication is just, I can't even put it into words. I just, I appreciate it. So thank you to everyone that works so hard for our community. And that's it.
Thank you for those words, Counselor Rieckel. Well, what I was going to say is we have a contractual obligation to, to evaluate our city administrator on a regular basis and to make a decision as to whether we renew her contract. City Administrator Betts's contract with the City of Gladstone expires on June 30th of this year, and we have the obligation to extend it. And it, and, and based on her needs in terms of evaluation, to, to do an evaluation of her performance. But I think we have the evaluation of Administrator Betts' performance right here before us in this report. And, and I wonder if anybody else on the city council feels that this is an adequate way of, of affirming our support of the work that she does in her role as administrator and her role overseeing the other departments. Counselor Roberts.
Mayor, I'd like to concur. I think that this really clearly demonstrates the, you know, over and above amount of work that our city administrator does. And I think it's reasonable that at this time, you know, we solicit Chad and initiating that process of extending that contract while also allowing for the contractual negotiations that need to take place to allow those to happen. And I'd like to, you know, throw my hat into the ring for the council representation to take part in those negotiations.
All right, Chad, I assume you heard that recommendation. Could, do you have some feedback for us on, are, are we doing this properly? Is this something that, is that, is that the way we would normally ask you to, to be involved in this process?
Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office for the transcription. Mayor, Council. Yeah, absolutely. The, this is a contract, meaning that as long as the two parties agree, we can do whatever we want. So even though the existing contract has language that we put in it about a year and a half ago to have a performance evaluation this spring, there's no need to do so if everyone feels that this, that, you know, the, the summary that you received tonight and the discussion you're having tonight more than adequately satisfies that requirement. You know, as long as Counselor, or sorry, City Administrator Betts is amenable to not having that and, and counting this as the performance evaluation, that's 100% fine. And then, you know, if we want, although the contract doesn't expire until June, there's nothing that stops us from entering into a new contract as early as later this month, if you all want to. You know, that's absolutely something we can do. And again, it just has to be, you know, mutual. As long as City Administrator Betts agrees to all this, and you know, I'm hopeful that she will, then everything would be fine. And so if this is what the will of the council is, then I, or with Counsel Roberts or whomever you choose, can meet with City Administrator Betts, get feedback from her about any changes that she would want to her contract. And then we can bring that back to you all for a discussion at a future meeting. And if you're all in agreement, we can bring the contract back to you for final execution at a later date.
All right, that's very helpful information and I appreciate your sensitivity to Administrator Betts's own needs. So let me put the question to you, Administrator Betts. We have what we consider a positive evaluation of your work now, but I know evaluation process works both ways. Sometimes there's things that you'd like to know. And are there any other things that you would like us to do regarding an evaluation or, or are you adequate with, or happy with this approach?
Well, first of all, thank you. I have a great management team and I think we work really well together. Second, I have monthly meetings with a lot of you and I get feedback from those meetings. And as a credentialed city manager, in the next couple of months through ICMA, I will be going through a self-evaluation process that will include sending out questions to all of my management. And if there's elected official that would like to provide input on that, then you can certainly be involved. That is separate of an evaluation process. But I would be open to having those conversations of extending the contract, yes.
Well, good. I have always appreciated how seriously you took your certification as a, as a city administrator and the, the efforts to, to continue to be certified and credentialed in this work. And if there's a process through that that is helpful to you, I'm glad that we can be of help to you on that.
Thank you.
So so I think we're in agreement. I, I, I sense a strong consensus about this. Counselor Huckabee, did you have an additional comment?
I just wanted to second everything that Counselor Roberts said, and I am more than happy to offer my availability. And also Administrator Betts, I'm in the middle of selfie vows and 360 reviews, so I feel that. I relate very much.
All right. Well, that's good. And Counselor Cook?
Oh, no, I just didn't want the moment to pass without the opportunity to appreciate City Administrator Betts. I think not many people within the city know the work that you do to keep the train on the tracks. I think what we've seen under your leadership is a shift to responsible stewardship of the city, planning foresight, and just an emotional intelligence and the thoughtfulness that really serves the city so well. I just want to appreciate you for that in this public forum.
Well, I think.
And the number of extra hours she puts.
Well, that's something we can work on in the contract too, actually. We, we've talked about some ways of, of approaching and addressing that issue. So it sounds pretty unanimous to me. Uh, so uh, it sounds pretty unanimous to me. So uh, Chad, thank you very much for uh, your availability to help with this process. We'll look forward to uh, you know, whenever you can have something for us to work on and an item to act upon uh, and, and officially adopt. Uh, hopefully very soon. All right. That's the end of that. Next item on the agenda. Uh, business carried forward, is there any?
I have nothing, thank you.
Business from the audience. Do we have people online or present in the room who have asked to speak for business from the audience?
We have one, Glenda Shearer.
Okay, Mrs. Shearer, come forward. You understand, push the button to speak and you'll have three minutes. Sure. Yes, and if you, once you push it, it'll stay on.
Is it on?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sure. Is that, is that okay?
We blew it to the table, so it makes it really hard to move, but.
I can lean forward. Hi there. Um, my name is Glenda Shearer, for the record. Um, I live in Gladstone. Um. This is really hard for me to be here tonight. I, this is heavy on my heart. That my son, I reported abuse to the Gladstone Police Department and they did not take the steps to collect evidence to prove that a crime had committed. And I appreciate all the work that you do. That's, but I have to say that my son was failed by you and your leadership. And um. Because if you don't collect evidence, there's no way to prove a crime. And the officer who was assigned to investigate my son's abuse of at the Gladstone Center for Ch- uh, Children and Families, did not collect evidence. And so when you say last month, oh, well, we took all this and we gave it to this person and this person and this person. And they said, nope, there's no way child abuse occurred. Well, how can you do that if there's no evidence? There are specific things that that officer was outlined to do and he did not do them. We have zero confidence in the Gladstone Police Department and its ability to ferry, to fairly and ethically conduct a child abuse investigation and zero confidence in you to oversee that officer and, and investigate what he did or did not do. I'd like you to put yourself in my shoes for just a moment. I noticed bruises under both of my son's armpits, on his collarbone and forearm. And his behavior dramatically changed after he started going to that school. Unbeknownst to me, he was put under the care of an IA who was supposed to have absolutely no contact with my children because of a prior incident, but she wormed her way into having daily extended contact with my son. And last month, I had to get a protection order against me because she saw me at the local Fred Meyer and went after me. I was afraid she was going to hit me. Her face turned red, her fists were like this. I don't know what happened to my son and I can't imagine what he experienced under her care. When I reported it to the police department, I expected an ethical investigation to be done and that is not what happened. The person did not collect evidence. And it was almost like I was treated like, oh, I picked up an or, a takeout order and they forgot something. And oh, it's no big deal that this didn't happen. I will not let this go. I will not let this go. We, I will get other agencies involved and I expect accountability for my son.
Your time is up.
Yep, of course it is. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is business from the council. Um, an opportunity to share things that you've been up to and things that concern you and maybe want to uh, have us work on in the future. We'll start uh, at my left with Councillor Garland.
Uh, Mindy Garlington. Happy New Year. That's hard to follow. I'll admit it. And I just want to remind people that, this just seems so odd that I'm going so off, in the opposite direction. But um, if your leaf pile will fit in your yard debris plant can, please use that first. I believe the leaf pickup is done. So we all need to take, be good stewards of not allowing the uh, stormwater drains in front of our homes to collect and block the drainage that we so need. Uh, given the fact that we are draining downhill. Um, I attended the school board meeting last month and I urge everyone to pay attention. These are your children and your tax dollars. There is a regular school board meeting tomorrow, January tenth at six P M on the Cracksburger campus. Uh, the Clackamas County Library Board uh, will meet Thursday, January eighteenth in person at the Oak Grove Library. We did not have a meeting in December. I attended the toll meeting at the high school on Saturday, January sixth with some other counselors that I did see there. So um, there, there was a lot of voices opposing the tolls and some very strong reasons why it's just not a good idea. Our own Mayor Milch spoke about a solution of taxing based on how many miles a year you can put on your car. I can tell you that very few of you out there match the miles I put on my car. And my, I myself believe that this would be a fair and equitable solution. West Lynn Mayor Rory shared state official internal documents he uncovered showing that a large portion of ODOT's tolling revenue would go, go towards administrative costs, something like forty cents on the dollar or more. And that, that collection contract would be given to an East Coast company. So uh, if you have some shared words for ODOT, get on your computer, send them a note. Um, it's definitely worth your time. Uh, congratulations, Mayor Milch, on a successful Mayor's Monday. If you missed it, you can look on Coin Six to see the video. Mr. Roberts will talk about the youth summit, maybe? That you might attend to, or okay, we'll, we'll talk about that later. Uh, the Glad, uh, Gladstone made the LOC newsletter for our new murals. I have a copy of the um, the article that I'll ask to add to our agenda packet so that we can, other people can see that. Um, it, it's a really nice article and it talks about both of the murals and um, how they got put there and all that. So it's really, it's really, it just shows a little part of Gladstone and it's a statewide uh, magazine, so that's kinda neat. Um, our Tukwila Dinner Group served a good old fashioned Italian Christmas dinner and then completed it with a cookie bar and festivities. We had two eight-foot tables of donated homemade and store-bought cookies. And then with our donated boxes from the Milwaukee Elks, each person was given a chance to walk down and build their own to-go cookie box to keep it for themselves for the holidays. We served about forty people that night and I want to thank the regular helpers. We had two new people there. And then for all the cookie donations from some really gracious neighbors, so thank you again for that. The January dinner is a barbecue that will be served by the Oak Grove Rotary, the Gladstone Oak Grove Rotary. Um, and I want to note that, you know, we talk a lot about uh, behavioral health, uh, mental health, what our police department's doing, what our um, what our fire department is doing uh, as a whole and how we're bringing everyone together. And our group has uh, uh, talked about it a little bit. And I want to note that we have, we feel, we have identified and attempted to meet the needs of many of the residents by simply providing a meal and to be a familiar face. And our hope is that the few that we have not yet met, for whatever reason, will soon feel the pull to be a part of what we have to offer. Um, and, and anyone else in our community that feels like they want to be a part of that, we are happy to have you. Uh, the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park are gearing up for an annual plant sale set for this April. So uh, save your planting spots for that. Uh, welcome to all of the new members of our boards and commissions. I hope that twenty twenty four sees some great ideas come around and there is still a vacant spot on the traffic board. I'd also like to mention that Monday, January fifteenth is Martin Luther King Day, and I'd like to share two quotes of mine that um, I keep on my desk at work, actually. One of them is, be a bush if you can't be a tree. If you can't be a highway, just be a trail. If you can't be a sun, be a star. For it isn't by the size that you win or fail, be the best of whatever you are. And the other is, everybody can be great because everybody can serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul full of generated, a soul generated by love. So I hope that everyone has a, a really good day and I hope that people take to heart the fact that it's a service day and um, that people go out and try and do some semblance of service for their community or the group that they already belong to. And I know I'm over my time, so thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Garlington. Council President Roberts.
A title that's far more glorious than it really is. Thank you all for putting me in that position, but I trust that I've uh, much like Councillor Huckabee, will not ever have to expel those duties. So, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, much like Councillor Garlington, where I was at that uh, tolling discussion. Um, just not one voice in favor, so overwhelmingly um, against that. So very interesting to listen to all those people. Um, like you said, uh, Mayor Bielstoski spoke about the uh, data that he uncovered. And so I had a conversation with him afterwards and he shared that with me. Um, that was very interesting to look through, so should any of you like to have that? Um, if you, you know, like I shared with you. Outside of that, that was all I have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Roberts. Councillor Cook.
I just want to uh, appreciate uh, former Council President Huckabee for your work um, and your leadership. Um, and I want to congratulate uh, Council President Roberts. I'm sure you're going to lead us into the future. Thank you. Um, I also want to uh, put in a little plug for the Gladstone Business Mixer, Gladstone Business Social, Social Mixer. Gladstone Business, people getting together and talking about business in Gladstone. Um, that is going to be um, January twenty fifth at five thirty P M at the Community Center. Um, I think, you know, one common theme that we've seen in the last year is people coming together and building new relationships and strengthening old ones. Um, and I, I know that that will continue in our business community, um, which is gonna become only more important as we um, build our Gladstone Town Center stakeholder community. I think we're gonna hopefully see a lot of engagement from that group as well. So um, Gladstone Business Mixer, five thirty P M, one twenty-five, be there.
Councillor Rieckel, by remote.
Yes, here I am. Um, I will keep it short and sweet. Um, attended the Parks Board meeting last night. Um, there was some discussion regarding the metro funds, the metro funds that the city is um, has available. And um, the board decided to focus on um, a restroom and shelter at uh, the Gladstone Nature Park and also backfilling of some pathways to make them more stable. They also um, are looking at shelters, either improvement, improving existing, replacing or adding additional picnic shelters at Meldrum Bar. Um, also in uh, as a side note on Meldrum Bar, the playground structure has been installed. We're waiting on bark chips and then um, there will be uh, this fence will be taken down and there will be a grand opening ceremony um, to celebrate that because it's pretty exciting. So um, that information should be coming through in the next couple of weeks. Um, one other thing that the board determined to focus on with those metro funds is increasing pathways and um, creating ADA accessibility at Max Patterson Park, which I think is a fantastic idea because um, as one of the board members pointed out, it is very muddy up there this time of year, but people are still utilizing those resources. So um, looking at installing a more comprehensive pathway to access um, picnic areas, the shelters and the restrooms. So that is a very exciting development and that's all I've got. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, one more thing. If anybody watching is involved with the R C track at Meldrum Bar. If you are part of an organized group or you are an individual that utilizes that space, I encourage you to attend the Parks Board meetings um, and reach out to the City Public Works Department um, with feedback because there is question about how we will proceed with that space and that um, amenity in the park going forward. So please, please, if you are involved, reach out to us. We're trying to reach you, so reach out to us and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Alexander.
Um, congratulations, Councillor Roberts and Councillor Cook for your swearing in. And I used to, used to give updates and have updates, but being on the Joint Oversight Committee, the fire department comes in and sort of does it for me. So I have nothing else to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Former Council President Huckabee.
That will be my official title from now on. Just joking. Um, couple of updates. Let's see, I was also at the tolling meeting at the Gladstone High School Auditorium, which was a fantastic venue to have said meeting. Um, and the committee thought that also, so kudos for that. I mean, there's not much just to say other than just repeating what Councillor Garlington and Councillor Roberts said. Um, nobody wants these. There was a somebody who wasn't listening quite well who thought Metro wanted it, um, but that's not what they said. Um, great representation up on the committee and from the public. Um, many elected officials were there from all of, all of the surrounding communities as well as ours. Um, and of course, our own Representative Vanessa Hartman um, was present and very gracious um, giving up her time for the community to speak instead of using that time instead. Um, so that was, that was very fortunate for all of us. Um, I wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow evening at the, tomorrow's Wednesday, yes, the Community Center, um, there will be an event and it is titled Holding Difficult Truths in Gladstone, Transforming Our Broken Past Into A Hopeful Future. Um, it's tomorrow night at six o'clock and this is with author Sarah Sanderson, who's a Gladstone resident. Um, discussing, I think, parts of her book. I, I believe it's going to be an exchange type situation. Um, there's somebody else joining her and I cannot remember the name, so I, I apologize for that.
Taylor Stewart.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I think it's gonna be a good showing from communities all over. Um, so I encourage everybody to go if you can. Um, slight update from the uh, Leaders for Equity and at Leaders for Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Council, um, while not my official um, duty as far as um, liaison or anything, uh, they had a, a meeting last month. Um, and I just kinda went over the history of LETIC, um, shared some of the historical documents. Um, I took an interest in the September meeting, which was prior to me being um, an advisory member on that. Um, and it was a member of the DOJ who is working with the biased hotline, the Biased Crimes and Incidents Hotline. Um, she shared a lot of information and I've asked for that to be forwarded to myself. Um, and I'm going to review it and possibly bring some of that back, just kinda like a year in review. Type of presentation and possibly even invite her to come and just do a brief presentation for our community. Um, I wanted to thank Councillor Rieckel um, for her level-headedness and quality leadership on our Parks and Rec Board. Um, it's very much needed and I appreciate you greatly. That's it.
Thank you, Councillor Huckabee and all the rest of the council. Um, as uh, Councillor Garlington mentioned, I did have my second appearance on the uh, Coin AM Extra program this week. Um, now that I've done it twice, I've come to the realization, when I've tried to record it, that the Channel Six program in the morning is on Channel Three on the television. So uh, you know, you, you have to, but my wife and I take care of our two young grandsons and most of that time, uh, when other people in this community are staying informed by watching local news that really cares about local issues. Um, we are playing with two little boys and getting them ready to head off to school. So um, but um, it is available on, excuse me, online if you want to see it. Uh, one of the observations I made there, which was aired the day after, or two days after we had this hearing at Gladstone High School, um, was that um, uh, it, it actually just slipped out of my head. Uh, but I will say about that hearing. It was the culmination of a lot of hard work that's going on, gone on between elected officials at all levels of government in this community, particularly County uh, Commissioner Paul Savas and uh, county staff who helped us, prepare us. But the mayors of the local cities who are really in touch with how this will impact their own local communities uh, have Who are really in touch with how this will impact their own local communities uh have worked together and uh, you know, delved into all aspects of it, the finances. Uh, the impact on local businesses. Uh, I think when we formed this community, one of, one of the points I made on TV was that when we, when this committee was formed, this subcommittee. We kind of thought they were there to just sort of rubber stamp and approve this whole process of tolling and uh, you know, work out the details. And to her credit, Representative Hartman made sure that they stayed on task of examining every aspect of this proposal. And through the work of um city leaders, We got way deeper into this and have come to the realization that this is not good for our committee, for our community, for our city. Uh, and so uh, the the hearing uh as as councillor Huckabee mentioned, It 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 almost took on a little more of a theatrical quality being held in the auditorium at the high school. Uh, we weren't just on a big flat surface in the building like the previous three or four hearings had been. Uh, but um, and and that contributed to a little more uh, oh, of a theatrical nature applause, uh, audience reactions to comments. Which um, you know, usually in something like this, you try to limit all that, just keep it, keep it straight, keep it uh, you know, just the words. But you can tell that the community is tuned into this. And I was especially uh appreciative of the comments we had from local business owners who reflected on how this would affect them. Um, I always thought that a- after the The pandemic, a lot of, a lot more people were working from home and maybe didn't need to commute as much as they did, but a lot of those same people, they still have kids that have to get to childcare. And if you have to pay a toll each way just to drop your kid's childcare in the morning, come back home and go to work, pick them up in the afternoon, there's four tolls a day Just to make sure that your children are paid for. And uh, there were representatives of Of businesses who go out and travel and come to your home to help you, home care, business people. They'd be driving over that bridge all day and paying that toll all day long. Uh, and so uh, besides the 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 financial inefficiencies of it, all the overhead costs. Um, and and the fact that there are no uh Tolling customer service businesses in in Oregon, uh, which is why we'd have to go outside the state to cover that aspect of it, which is a huge cost. Um, and and I guess when you, when you have tolls, you go from being a motorist to being a customer. And you have to have a customer service department to say, hey, we sent you this bill, why haven't you paid it? Uh, that's the level of interaction that 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 the uh Oregon Department of Transportation is going to have with the public if this were to go through. So Um, you kind of know how I feel about it. I tried to make it clear on the day of the event. Uh, the uh Oregon Legislative Information System, I think that's the O L I S, whatever it stands for. Uh, has a recording of the session. The first recording that they tried to uh uh put online Was the voices were out of sync with the video. It it was like in slow motion and you'd hear somebody talk for seven seconds and there'd be a gap and then they talk more. Uh, I checked it to date and it's all there. So even if you only watch the first six or seven speakers, you will get a good Uh, overview of all the issues and all the concerns that the community has on this, and I think you will find it very informative and very entertaining. Uh, administrator, I mean, uh, representative Hartman has called on audit for an audit of their their books. Uh, you know, a really reexamination of this whole issue. Uh, she's released a press release that I think went out to us. Uh, and so um, we're staying on top of this and we're very, very well represented uh in the state legislature. I, years ago, I had an opportunity to go down to Salem with some people from a group called MACG, the Metropolitan Alliance for Common Good, Who advocate uh with the state legislatures on issues that they're concerned about, mostly uh really supporting people in need. Um, and we got to meet with uh legislators. It's the first time I'd ever done something like that. I didn't live close to the city where that happens uh in my previous uh the uh home. And When it comes to the people directly, like we had here in Gladstone, it's a whole different experience. Uh, and I am glad that people turned out the way they did. I'm glad that the, I I see our school president Tracy Grant is here tonight. I'm glad that the That the school district made available that space to have this event. Um, and so it's been a good thing for Gladstone, and I'm just very hopeful that we've turned a corner on uh how we think about this issue. And uh, that the governor and the legislator will will see that this is not the way to fund our transportation system. All right, I've said way too much. Thank you for uh calling us to our attention, the event tomorrow night. I think that's really a good opportunity to, for us to delve into Gladstone history and and Oregon history and understand how it impacts our community. Uh, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Roberts, seconded by councillor Huckabee. Tammy, will you call the role, please?
Councillor Riekel.
Yes.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Huckabee.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the meeting is adjourned at eight twenty eight P M.